Father, we thank you for the faithfulness of these your public servants, both the council and the staff. Holy Spirit, come in this room with your presence and make it very clear what is the best decision for the citizens of our community. We ask, Lord, that we just step aside from all the hoopla that's going on in the world and just come into your presence to rest and to know that when we trust you, you will make the path very clear. We just thank you and we praise you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance on three. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, Mike, have roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz, councilmember Purdon, councilmember Carr, Mayor Steinmeier, councilmember Corey, councilmember Folic, councilmember Forbes.
Here.
Okay, we approve the agenda is basically solid. Okay, and mayors, welcome. Folks, I'm glad to see you're here. This is America where we work for the people. And I see everybody that was here except for Ron works for the city. Okay, thanks for coming. Now we have public comment on anything on the agenda. Okay, moving along, eight A. Mike?
This is a first reading of a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request for an amendment to our residential plan development, RPD, to include 24 multifamily units as the principal use of the property and to add one deviation located at 04-48-25-B1-00002.000A, Bonita Springs, Florida 34135, and providing for an effective date.
Thanks, Mike. At this time, if there's any, this is a quasi judicial hearing, if there's anyone in the audience, including staff, who intend to present or give any testimony in this matter, please rise, raise your right hand and really be sworn. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I'm done.
Motion to move to a second hearing.
Second.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogaz, councilmember Purdon, councilmember Carr, Mayor Steinmeier, councilmember Corey, councilmember Folic, councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, nine A. We have considered agenda?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Purdon, councilmember Carr, Mayor Steinmeier, councilmember Corey, councilmember Folic, councilmember Forbes, councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Okay, 10 A is Jamie Bogaz. Please, presentation.
Yes, London Bay Homes, in coordination with Coastal Engineering, has reached out to me regarding dredging the Astero Bay for the marina that they're putting in. And it's gonna extend from Weeks Fish Camp into the entrance of the marina. And this is a, we'll have public access restaurant and et cetera at the marina. And so it'll benefit the community also. It has just gotten too shallow over the years and with the hurricane, so they just need to dredge that small portion. And they're just asking the council to agree with this and then have us send the letter that was drafted here to send it to Lee County in coordination with the requesting the West Coast Inlet Navigation District to coordinate all the permitting process.
And this was done in the past?
Um.
Approved, I imagine it has been.
I think, but we would just approve it because, or the commissioners are going to approve it. But I think we should move it forward and actually ask the commissioners to expedite it.
Yeah, that wasn't my question. My question was, has this been done before? Do you?
I, I'm sure it's done at one point. I don't know when, but it's been done.
I would imagine it has been done.
Yes, but it's been a long time and it's just gotten too shallow. The boats can't enter and exit. And so.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other comment?
Mayor and council, the engineer is here if you have any questions for him.
There the engineer? Yes, sir. Come forward.
Mayor Steinmeier. Mayor, just a question. Is there any opportunity, this is gonna be a big dredging operation, for the city to piggyback? Because moving the equipment's a big part of the expense. No?
No. This, the complication here is there are stringent requirements in Astero Bay for dredging. And so the developer is gonna pay for this small dredging project, but they're gonna apply through it under the West Coast Inlet Navigation District, who handles most of the main channels within Astero Bay. It's not a city responsibility.
No, I'm talking about is there a possibility to piggyback like the river?
Which is also a West Coast Inlet Navigation District maintained facility.
Right, so I'm asking, can we get somebody to take a look while they're up here with a big dredging barge, too?
I, yeah, I think.
This is gonna, I.
Motion to say.
It's too complicated, yes.
Yeah. They take care of everything, markers, every, and the waterways, correct?
They take care of regional channels that serve public access throughout, really from Lee County north. It's a, it's a large entity. Mark can probably explain it a whole lot better than I can.
And just to, just clear, you, everyone in the city gets the West Coast Inlet Navigation. They see the tax on their bill and that is a four-county regional body, similar like the MPO. So if there were city projects, generally what ends up happening is city petitions through their county representatives to get those projects funded. So that, that would, rather than piggyback, we'd probably ask the WCI Indy to pay for it and do the.
Okay, this has been dredged before, I assume? Or do you, would you know?
Good morning, council. My name's Mark Kincaid. I'm with Coastal Engineering. And the channel into the Weeks Fish Camp, it has been dredged, but historically, there are no existing permits that I'm aware of that it has been dredged in the last 40 or 50 years. But since it's been closed in 24, since 2014, since it's been closed and there's not boat traffic coming in and out of it, it's just silted in. And that's the need that we're trying to take care of right now. In addition to the recent hurricane that's deposited more sediment and debris into that channel, we just wanna address that before the marina is open and the boat ramps open. And then there's an issue with access to a brand-new marina we're trying to get in front of.
You don't anticipate any problem with this?
No, no. And, and to answer the question of the large dredge equipment, it will not be large dredge equipment. It's a relatively small amount of volume that we're talking about, probably about 1,000 cubic yards of material to be removed.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Backyard hens, I don't understand why this is on the agenda in the first place, but can you explain this?
Yes, mayor and council, I'll ask community development to come forward at your last meeting. Councilmember Purdon addressed the fact that we had a temporary program to allow backyard hens. And so there's been an interest in the community. Originally, the program was capped at 25 residential units that could have them. We've never exceeded that, as far as I understand, but there is an interest in that. And we had not finalized the program, so this, I'll ask Sean Givens to come forward and present that.
Hey, Sean, so this never got, this order's never really got passed? Is that what you're saying?
No, actually, it didn't.
How many backyard hens?
So currently, the program allows for a permit cap of 25 houses.
How many do we have currently?
24. We have one outstanding permit for inspections right now.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I can understand that now. Motion to approve?
Uh, we need to.
Mayor, shall I read the title into the record?
Okay.
This is a first reading of an ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending the Bonita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Zoning, to amend Section 4-1052-Backyard Hens, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivners, errors, and modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing, and an effective date.
Well, I'll move to a second hearing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Well, I have just a.
Did you ask permission to start talking?
While Mr. Gibson is standing at the podium, may I ask questions of our staff member, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
How have, how has the preliminary program gone?
Correct. So the preliminary program actually ended and it was codified into code circa 2015-ish.
Mm-hmm.
So we had the program in place for a while. Council at that point in time elected to keep the 25 limit cap. Since the program has done very well, there always are minor and fractional issues, much more of the educational policy. I think the biggest challenge we face now is that individuals are acquiring hens without a permit because they're unaware they can do it, or they don't want to be on the waiting list, which has been the methodology we have used to kinda track backlog. So as permits are expired, as permits are avoided, as individuals say, I don't want to be in the program anymore, the kids went to college, I don't want to deal with the hens, we put those back in the system. We've been recycling the permits over and over. This would allow us to remove that cap, so if you are an individual or duplex homeowner on a conventionally zoned lot and you can meet the requirements, you would qualify for the program, subject to enforcement.
So there won't be a cap any longer?
There would no longer be a cap.
And there, there was no need for it? You didn't see?
I think originally the cap was, it was a very new and novel idea at the time. Actually, since most of our jurisdictions surrounding us, the municipalities, have actually carbon copied our program. So we were actually the leaders in this several years ago. Hat tip to my former staff member who actually kinda kicked all of this off. It's been a very successful program. Again, like I said, there were always some challenges with these kind of things, but it was more or less a rollout education problem at this point in time, you know, under council's direction. We should remove the cap. We have the language drafted to do that and kinda make the code make a little more sense in that regard.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
These hens, they're movable?
Correct, yes, sir, yeah. There's a cap to the.
They're required to be removable?
They are, yes. Otherwise, you have to get a.
Move to different parts of the yard, so fertilize each part of the yard or whatever.
As long as you're meeting your setbacks and require distances from adjacent residential homes, yes, they could be moved around. The idea would be then be mobile. If they're gonna be a structural stationary unit that requires an additional permit that kinda deals with like wind load calculations, it becomes more of an actual structure as opposed to a mobile coop at that time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good.
And one more question, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Does the city supersede homeowners or homeowners association?
So for these type of program, if an HOA, for example, said, we don't want that, they would win. In most cases, HOAs can only be more restrictive, just not less.
Yes.
And for example, like Fred, I'll use Hunter's original example, or Bonita Bay for councilman Corey, this wouldn't qualify for those communities. This is gonna be individual, conventionally zoned, so not PDs, not CPDs, just.
It was just added to mine.
Yes, oh, you're good. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but I have had several people ask about it, so.
Absolutely, again, they can always come check out the office. This will give us the option to kinda build those permits out a little more quickly, not to put them on a waiting list, if we proceed forward with this. Otherwise, it's a waiting list process and that can take some time.
Code enforcement takes care of this?
Yes, they did a fantastic job with that. I'm working on cases.
Can you tell the difference between a hen and a rooster?
So roosters are not allowed, only hens.
I don't know.
Otherwise, we're gonna be waking up way too early.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
We need to open this one up for public hearing.
Public hearing.
Last crack? No? Okay.
None of our staff wants chickens.
Okay.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Free the chickens. I don't wanna be the only one, but. Next item is mine. And I apologize for this, this item. We were, I was planning on having the petition by BSU for their special tariff at this meeting. Unfortunately, we, the way we time the meetings, they're back-to-back, similar to a zoning hearing. Actually, there's a longer time period for noticing non-zoning ordinance, so in this case, we didn't have time to get it in for the paper. I've talked to BSU, they're, they're okay with it. So it'll come back at your, at your next meeting.
Okay.
I just wanted to do that because there was, there was notice in the original green sheet that it would be heard today, in case any members of the public want to speak.
Should we just keep it to save paper?
What was that?
Should we just, you're more than welcome to, but we're required to republish it each time for the public, for transparency.
That's two trees.
So I would, I would just ask that you, you go ahead and continue this to your next meeting.
Continue to the next meeting, please.
If we didn't continue it to the next meeting, what happens?
It'll still go, either way.
Yeah.
I just want to give you something to do, I'm sorry.
Okay, flood hazard, Lee County consent, Salt Leaf Community Development?
Yes, this is going back to councilman Bogaz's last item. London Bay Homes, the project, the Bayview project, they are financing the marina improvements, the road, and some of the utility improvements, and other infrastructures through a community development district that lies within the city. It's a, it's a district that's independent of the city, will not, we will not have to pay for any of those, that infrastructure. It does require the city's consent and before it goes on to the county's commission, I've reviewed the ordinance. Wes Haber, council for the, for the CDD is here, if you have any questions, but basically we're just, we're approving it so that the commission can approve it at their next meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
So the county commission has a role over us on whether we can rule on this?
The, no, the county commission approves the creation of an independent special district that will have taxing authorities. This is very similar to most of our, our communities. Our big gated communities are all community development districts. They pay for infrastructure. It can be roads, it can be park facilities, it can be stormwater management systems. For this particular facility, as you recall, there is a significant portion of the facility that will be open to the public. The marina portion, that was part of the PD condition, that will also be financed through the CDD.
So if you wanted a gated community, you have to go to the county in the city?
No, it says nothing to do with the land. It's just, it's a mechanism for paying for the infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Hello?
Council, council.
There was a second.
There was a second. Somebody jammed it.
Motion made by councilmember Carr, second by councilmember Bogaz. Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Proud to have them in the city of Bonita Springs. Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. 13 A, city manager?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. As you recall, right in, soon unfortunately after Hurricane Ian, city staff participated in the hazard mitigation program with Lee County. That is when we bring forth projects out of the disbursement amount that's given, that's the HMGPDR program. We were ranked very well and appreciate our other municipalities and jurisdictions in the ranking that we provided. So at this time, we would not want to amend the dollar amount we asked, as that was clearly a process that we all worked to, to get to those numbers. There's a finite amount of money that's gonna be designated for that particular program. We began outreach, as you're required to actually have participants in order to get this grant. As you recall, we picked several neighborhoods, the Spring Creek neighborhood, those homes around the Imperial River, Terry Street South, Pennsylvania Street North, and Bonita Beach, the communities on Bonita Beach. And what we were asking was of interest in participation as to whether you would be interested in having your property acquired and you be relocated, and/or would you be interested in elevating your home. The initial outreach is outstanding. We were very excited about the community reaching out to us and wanting to give us feedback. And it is clear that the majority of those folks want help with elevation of their home. So because this is so specific in the program, we're asking you to give staff a little leeway to work with those numbers. So the approved amount for each neighborhood, the total amount would not change, but we like to shift more funds towards the elevation so that we don't, so we can have more folks participate in that program. We still want to reserve in each neighborhood some funds, should anyone feel they would like their property acquired, and, and then once it's acquired, it can never be built back on. It has to be left for stormwater purposes or passive uses. So we would like, if you would give us that direction for that flexibility, if so, then we will coordinate with Lee County on adjusting those applications with them for the final approvals.
How much money is involved in this? Both of them?
Ellie McKeon is here. She can give us an update. It's, it's each.
Is it more expensive to elevate or?
Oh, if you're asking, so I, we will have to go through the process with an engineer to tell us estimates on these, so we don't want to specifically pigeonhole any property because it's gonna depend on the structure, it's gonna, the original materials, the location of the property, where they are in the flood zone. So one house could be much more expensive than another house in elevating it, so.
And does that person own the house still?
Oh, come on. How many times are you gonna interrupt today?
With, with the elevation program, they would continue ownership of that home. There would probably be some additional requirements, processes of insurance and flood insurance that we require.
Yeah, once we elevate the home, then there's a specific period of time where they have to carry flood insurance. And we discuss all of that ahead of time to make sure that the property owner understands what the requirements are before we start the process.
Now, if we elevate this house and then turn it around, can they sell it the next day? Do we have restriction on, on some things?
If you, there is nothing in the program, the FEMA program, that says you have to hang on to that house for a specific amount of time. However, if you want, if a municipality wants to be more, more restrictive, then we can develop our own policies and procedures.
So that would be something we would discuss with council down the road, if there's any restrictions that the community would like to have. But in the overall process of this, we would be making the whole community as a whole more resilient. And each of those properties that were removed from the repetitive loss process or that had experienced flooding initiates a better savings on the NFIP program for the city as a whole. So you are making a more resilient community, even if they sell, they're selling to folks who are gonna be a little bit more out of harms way.
Hey, Fred, please.
Yeah, this is more for informing the public as well. First of all, will most of these people be low to moderate income?
No.
Okay, if they're not, then what is the, what do they get from us in the way of help versus they have to, don't they still have to get a mortgage, or we help them get an SBA mortgage and all that?
There is no income restrictions for the FEMA program, and that's what the disaster, the hazardous mitigation grant program is. This, our community, there's a 75-25 match requirement for this program, where FEMA will provide 75% of the cost to elevate, and then the city provides the remaining 25%.
We basically, we pick up the whole, all, all the costs is being picked up even for a non, a non-low income, moderate family?
The purpose of the HMGP Program DR is specifically to give flexibility to communities because, especially, for example, if you have a non-owner occupied structure, they probably would never qualify for the CDBGDR.
Right.
And they may, with the rental income they have, they may not be motivated to necessarily elevate the home and keep the home out of harms way. You would then be helping the residents who are actually renting that home and, because they're in harms way. So overall, the HMGP program is to create a better resilient community, has nothing to do with income level.
And mayor, may I ask one more question?
Yes.
And are these people eligible to get flood insurance?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
My turn?
Your turn.
So, just so I understand, it's not a pool of money that we decide on the amount based on how many people apply? It's gonna be specifically, we'll find out what that specific structure cost, and it's 75-25.
And one thing to also is, we will be working with the county, one of the discussion staff at the staff level, not at the resiliency level. We've been talking about the possibility of utilizing some of the 1.1 billion as match for our MGP program, so, HMGP program. So we're hopeful that we would maybe have some, if not all, some of that 25% match for the city to help us.
Yeah, I, I.
It's Fred.
I, I would be seriously interested in us putting some condition on this because you go to all this work and they sell it, they'll probably, they're, they're getting a lot of money.
I think we could talk about that later, but, you know, FEMA, it is a federal grant program and that just may not be allowed, so we can have those discussions later.
Okay.
The other, the other advantage is, of course, when the property sells, tax revenues increase, which is revenues.
I understand.
Back to the city.
But the, the overall goal of the program is to keep people out of harms way. So the more homes that we elevate, the safer and more resilient the community is. It also provides that extra savings for the residents as a whole on their insurance programs.
All right.
Okay, we vote on this?
Yes, please. We, just, we're asking for you to allow some flexibility in the submitted applications to work with the information we've received to make it most beneficial for the residents who've reached out to us.
Move to approve? Yeah, you have direct.
I, I would like a motion because we're amending a grant application.
Motion to approve.
Chris.
Second.
Corrigan, second, yeah.
Okay, any more comments?
Chris and, they all, who cares?
What?
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Okay, city manager?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. Our finance director is going to come forward and provide you with the presentation of the March financial report. I think someone's doing magic behind the scenes here. I'm not really sure where the stuff is. There we go. I noticed you guys were opening it up. There we go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here to do your monthly financial report. It's for March, so it is six months into your fiscal year. We do, and I ask y'all's patience each month, we show you the, the same graph, again, so we can quickly identify trends and see where, you know, there are reasons for joy and reasons for concern, if you will. This is our general fund, regular, recurring, operating revenue. What it's meant to show is the consistency of the different types of revenues that we use to operate as a city on an ongoing basis, general operations. This is a really good percentage, as you noticed. The beginning of the year, we collect a lot of our real estate taxes, ad valorem revenues, as they're legally called. Yes, sir?
Can we expect any more ad valorem tax coming in for this year?
We do receive ad valorem each month, and we do consistently, um, almost every month of the fiscal year. You'll note that, um, people pay as of November, which we usually get by December in order to get the, the start of the discount. So each month, it typically goes down a little bit. This year is, as we'll talk about in one of my later slides, uh, will, will operate a little differently, function a little differently because of the impact of the hurricane on specific property. They have received a delayed deadline to pay their taxes, and we're going to talk about the refund process that's currently going on. Um, so that'll behave a little differently. Um, but generally speaking, we receive real estate taxes and ad valorem every month. So primarily at the beginning of the year, but we do get.
That is, that is the bulk of it for the year? Nine million, nine hundred?
It should be, it should be. There are, believe it or not, and particularly because of the June deadline, um, we'll talk about it in a later slide again, but typically, your taxes become delinquent April first every year. So everybody pays by March, they will have paid, that means we get in April. So there will be probably another pretty good, pretty good installment coming to us in your April financial report for the March collections. But this year particularly, any property that applied and received either they're uninhabitable or completely destroyed, those have until June. So they can pay up until, um, July first, they can pay up until June thirtieth. So that means we would see that, those funds in our July financial report because the county collects them in one month and they remit them to us in the next, similar to the way the state does for us with sales tax and things.
And then we have the tax certificates are being sold soon?
Tax certificates are sold each year on, on delinquent property by the tax collector. Now, what happens with that is we still receive our funds through the sale of those certificates. So the, generally speaking, we get ninety-six percent of what we, um, the full assessment, and that's what we budget by Florida statutes, to comply with Florida statutes.
Very, very good.
And we, we've never really dropped below the ninety-six percent, and that's pretty consistent statewide, and it's, it's based upon the way the statute is outlined with assessing property on the taxes and collection process.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for the question. Um, this next slide is the general, general fund, regular operating, recurring operating revenue. What we try to do is show you current fiscal year to date as compared to prior fiscal year to date. And, um, this slide, I always have a favorite, this is my favorite, just because with the things that we've, we've had going on in our, in our, the economy nationally, statewide, and the impacts of the hurricane, our regular recurring operating is really doing quite well. And, and that's something to, um, to see as a positive financial indicator for us here at the city. General fund expenditures, these are, generally speaking, our regular recurring operating expenses. Again, current fiscal year to date as compared to the immediate prior fiscal year to date. Um, we've, we talk about this quite a bit. It's not unanticipated that the majority of these, um, costs are going upward because of what we know is happening with inflation, not just in our area, but around the nation. One anomaly that I've pointed out before, and I wanted to, it's actually working in reverse of what we think, um, the, what is it? The economic envi- no, physical environment, excuse me, that category, that third column over, it's green there. Those last fiscal year, we purchased stormwater pumps. So that was a capital outlay, not, it was a one-time purchase, it wouldn't be repeated. So that particular column is actually going down, but that's because we, we don't buy those types of assets every year, and they're not meant to be purchased each year. Restricted revenues. This is one of our somewhat, from a financial standpoint, challenging slide, but again, not unanticipated. These are our revenues that are restricted for a specific purpose by enabling legislation such as our building permit fees. They are intended to operate our building permit facility, road impact fee, park impact fees. Those are by law restricted to, um, add capacity to our roads and to our parks. So what we do with these is, you'll see on a later slide, we accumulate these, uh, to fund our capital projects or our operations based upon what we're seeing in the new construction industry here locally. Again, we did, we knew this was, this was coming, this decrease, and it's consistent with what we're seeing with other entities. I think it's just going to be a cycle that we're just going to monitor and we're going to budget accordingly. With cash balances, um, this slide and the next slide, what we try to do is give you three fiscal years, it's a snapshot in time of cash balances, hoping, hoping to demonstrate to you all how we accumulate our funds to pay as you go for our capital improvement, because the majority of these cap- columns, these segments here rather, are for our capital improvement. We accumulate funds to pay for those projects, and some of the times when you'll see the actual category go down, that means we're utilizing those funds. We've gotten to the point in the project where we're actually doing construction, dispersing the funds for acquisition or construction or something of that nature. So it's very cyclical in nature, it's a snapshot in time, but very healthy and a good, financially speaking, and a good thing for us to keep our eye on. This is just a continuation of our cash balances. You'll see our, again, these are mostly our restricted funds that we are used for our capital improvements or for our operation. We wanted to take a minute today and update y'all on the refund for property taxes. We've talked about this in the past as the enabling legislation was enacted, but we want, it's currently going on in our county and in our city. So we wanted to make sure that, we just reviewed this for you all and let you know where we stood in the process. There's a refund for property taxes for residential improvements. That is specifically a dwelling or a house that was rendered uninhabitable by Hurricane Ian or Nicole. That was adopted at the state level across the state. This excludes, this is a key point here, um, it excludes land and structures not essential to use as a residential dwelling. For example, a detached garage, that would not be eligible for a tax refund. A swimming pool, not eligible for a tax refund. And, and the land specifically is a good piece. Every real estate property tax that's paid here includes land as well as improvements and structures on that. The land part of the property taxes is not eligible for refund. The applications were submitted by each property owner to the Lee County Property Appraiser on or before April first. So those are already in place, in play at the property appraiser, and then the tax collector has already begun their process of evaluating, approving, and actually issuing refunds, which is a great thing for those who need. Uh, the details for eligibility, it had to qualify, it had to have a loss of use for thirty days or more. And again, it had to be a residential dwelling or a house, and it could be homesteaded or non-homesteaded, but just a residential dwelling. And the taxes were required to be timely paid on or before April first or June first. Now, you, you all don't see June first, this is the first time ever we've seen that with respect to a deadline with respect to property taxes, and that's because legislation was enacted to allow these property owners who were significantly impacted by the hurricane delayed time to pay. The refund timeline, as of June one, Lee County Property Appraiser will notify everyone who's applied if they're qualified or not. And the tax collector is going to continue all through this time, as, as we're seeing, we'll talk about it in the next slide, as we're seeing, as soon as the property appraiser approves it, they're processing it, they're getting those funds out, which is a great thing for these taxpayers. September first is when we are, will legally, as of September first, will be notified by the tax collector the total amount of refunds they have in the city. So we have until, all until that time for him to, um, remit to us the total amount that will be refunded. As of May fifth, the city's refunds, as you'll see there, is approximately seventy-four, seventy-five thousand dollars to date. And those are, keep in mind, the reason why I went through this whole process, it is a process, it's a legal process. So that doesn't mean that's where we're going to end up. Those are just the applicants with property in Benita who filed and who've made it through the approval process. This in no way indicates where we're going to be, we will know that as they move through the process. Yes?
These refunds come out of our money?
Yes, sir, it sure does. And this is our portion, and remember, we're about six percent of the total tax bill. So this is our six percent of the tax bill that was refunded. And it, each, I think they've sent us two reports, they being the tax collector, who's sent us two reports so far, so they're sending us reports. So we'll let you all know how it progresses as we go through. Standing, again, the last comment, staff will continue to monitor, and we'll let you all know as we go through.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any?
Any other questions? Jesse?
No. Great job.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Good news week, yeah.
Um, thank you, Mayor and council, I just have a few more items to touch.
And recovery?
Yes, I need a recovery. Um, I ju- I just forwarded an email we received yesterday, this morning to you all. I just wanted to make you all aware that the recovery task force is asking for some specific facts regarding our community development department. They would like, and they're asking this of all jurisdictions to report on the review and approval process timeline, how long a permit's taking to go through the process, um, what are the approval factors, keynotes in deciding whether or not an application is approved or denied? And then also permit, uh, fees, which you all recall, we are, we are not changing our recommendation, is, as of right now, you've waived all permit fees for Hurricane Ian-related permits. So, um, we're going to work on courting the, the public information request. I understand this would be some form of a dashboard that the county is looking to do. Um, so I just wanted to make sure you all are aware that we're going to be providing that information. And then, secondly, I, these words are hard to come out of my mouth, but on June first will be hurricane season. So we wanted to, uh, advise you all that at our June twenty-first, you will have your hurricane update. Um, unfortunately, Tony won't be able to be with us, but Chris, Chris Campbell, the deputy director of, um, Neighborhood Services, will be doing the presentation. You will, um, hopefully have a report from, um, our Lee County Operations EOC Director. And then our partnering, um, neighbors are also going to be invited to participate. Um, and also at that meeting, we will also have an update from the Lee County Sheriff's Office on, on, on their, um, strengthening efforts as well. And I think that completes, is there anything else you needed? Okay, I think that, yes?
Uh, let's see. During this period where we're evaluating what we want to get done for the next seven months with the task force, is anything getting done in between for the next seven months? Are we getting any recovery?
So I, I would, I would venture to say that there's two paths falling, going forward. Is, one is, there is a regular procedure, very similar to Hurricane Ian, Irma, Irma, that your staff follows. For example, the HMGP program process, um, our reporting, we're going to be working on an update to the, um, um, emergency management plan for the city. Um, we're going to be looking possibly to one of the disaster mitigation folks to help us. Something new would be the, um, the, um, after-action report of Hurricane Ian. So your staff is moving forward on our regular recovery process. Um, as addition to that, the recovery task force is meeting with branches and looking at an overall plan. So, uh, your staff's not stopping the process that we normally, we're, we're still going to be looking for other funding sources, we're pursuing the HMGP program. Should there be any other, um, opportunities from the state after this legislature for grant funding? We understand there's some recovery money coming for Hurricane Ian and Nicole, so we would make recommendations on that. So there's, there's two paths that continue to move, to move forward, so.
Thank you, I'm glad you clarified that. I thought maybe we stop everything for, for seven months while we evaluate.
No, sir, and we would continue, like, as we're going to get into the workshop here, wha- whatever priorities are discussed there, we, as your staff, assume those are priorities, not just for the task force, but as city council has set. So if there, if we are aware of an opportunity to assist with one of those, we would bring, bring that forward, so.
Okay, uh, do we have a public comment? I guess we're, we can take a ten-minute adjournment and come back for the next meeting? Is that possible?
Uh, I, I have a question, sir, may I?
No, it just immediately falls back.
At last meeting, um, Councilman Forbes brought up, um, fatality memorials. Did you guys look into that and find out?
We're, we're working on it.
Oh, okay.
And actually, Mayor, uh, I think you had Mayor and council member reports as well in your.
Okay, yeah. Council reports? Seeing none?
Well, I, I was at the Horizon meeting, um, and it was fascinating. RSW is expanding, we're going to have a whole new terminal, and there'll be one entrance, one security entrance, and then you can go anywhere you want in the terminal. It's paying for itself with the vendors, it just is going to be fabulous. More non-dro- non-stop flights to different places. And then, at the next general meeting, which is the Friday in June, is going to be their hurricane panel. So that should be interesting to hear what different people around the state have to say. And I will bring back specifics if there's any given. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, can we adjourn for ten minutes and come back for the, for the second meeting? Okay, thank you, folks.